Would you like to?
Yeah, probably.
Okay, you guys. So, just so that is on the record, um, this will be our last, um, nine-epoc policy meeting. Um, we are gonna take a break next week, just because it's the first week of school, letting everyone get acclimated to that. And then, the, I think it's the 12th, um, we are moving to six to seven thirty. So, I will send out a flyer, um, with the agenda, um, and then, uh, that next week is canceled. But we will be moving policy to six to seven thirty on Thursdays, um, starting, I think it's on the 12th.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, okay, so, um, this policy, we've already looked at the results, twenty-four sixty extended learning opportunities. But Lisa had to put together some applications and, um, guidelines. And so, you just need to kind of walk through these, and then, if all is well, then we will send this to the board. So, this is the application she put together. So. Request permission or credit for extended learning opportunities. Please complete the application below, which will allow your building principal and superintendent to consider your request for an extended learning opportunity. If you have any questions about this application, please contact your counselor or building principal. The application is due to the principal at least ten days in business days prior to the beginning of the proposed opportunity. If this timeline is problematic, please contact your building principal to request a modification. Upon completion of the ELO, the student shall provide the building principal the assessment projects by which the student demonstrates proficiency of the Idaho content standards for this course, and a log indicating the dates and the times of learning experiences, a grade of pass will be included on the transcript once proficiency is verified. And then it just goes into how many hours of instruction will be provided, for which course are you requesting credit. Please list the Idaho content standards will be met if you participate. How will your participation in this ELO benefit you? How does your participation in this positively impact your post-secondary education? Who will be responsible for supervising your learning? And then this is the office, um, portion, so this application is. Please provide information pertaining to the reason for denying this application is. So, that's the application, and then, here's the rubric for how it's decided, and she pulled a lot of this just from the law. So, Idaho requires sixty hours of instruction to receive one high school credit. Anything less than sixty hours must be pre-approved by the Idaho Department of Education. The student must be able to ensure the required sixty hours of instruction to receive the one point for this criterion. If less than sixty hours, zero points will be given. If the request is for a course, we don't offer a course proposal, must be presented to the school board for approval, so we can create the course code in Skyword. Name of course, is this a new course? If so, the principal will work with the parent, guardian, custodian, and student to create the course proposal and submit it to the assistant superintendent to take to the next regular, um, school board meeting. To earn credit, the state standards must be met. If the same standards that would be met in our classrooms are meant through the ELO, then award one point. If not, award zero. No points are awarded. Does this narrative discuss enrichment opportunities, career readiness, or employability? So, then you're giving points. Ensure the person responsible for supervising the student's learning is aware of the date that grades are due for the transcript. If the total number of points is three, this request needs the criteria set forth. If the total number of points is less than three, this request does not qualify total points. And then roles in the responsibilities of the parent. So, any, um, shall be a sole financial responsibility of the parent. All transportation to and from the ELO location shall be the responsibility of the parent. The parent will be responsible for monitoring the attendance. It is the responsibility of the student to maintain outstanding attendance enrollment. It is the responsibility of the student to maintain, to maintain an attendance log with dates and times indicated and have the log signed, initialed by someone with the organization. It is the responsibility of the student to store all assessment projects that are graded and indicate the student's level of proficiency to provide to the building principal at the end. It is the responsibility of the student to meet every two weeks with his or her counselor to check in and ensure that he or she is on track to earn the credit. And then here's the signature page. Do you guys like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then guidelines, so a lot of this is the same, so I won't read it. But, in alignment, um, with current practices related to opportunities to earn high school credit outside the classroom, a student may earn a maximum of two credits earned through extended learning. An application must be completed. So, this is kind of procedural, that parents would see it, and application must be completed.
Studies.
Yeah.
Your work release, or all those things.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm coming from time, but was, there were all those tasks or something, or was this been always done?
No, it's, it knew it's an out there, but it never does.
It hasn't been a policy that we have updated in a long time. Yeah, but it's, it's been in law for a time, yeah. If all criteria are met, this-
We didn't suffer it, right? We just do later.
And they haven't been given a policy.
Oh.
Yeah, so, like, we talked about some great opportunities, that there are other businesses, organizations, say, their leaderships are there. Yeah. Really, could you, or they could, to park a rec. Like, do that, like, there are some great places for this, but it just hasn't been optioned to get a credit for it.
So, if all criteria are met, and the student demonstrates proficiency, a grade of pass will be included on the student's transcript. If criteria are not met, a failing grade may be transcribed. Criteria for successful completion, all assessment projects used to determine logs of dates and times. Um, if the student is requesting a credit for English, math, science, or social studies, but the ELO does not encompass all state standards for that course, the course can be evaluated as an elective. If the student is requesting a credit for a poor class, all assessment projects used to determine the student's level, unless they're in a score of sixty or higher, the student should meet bi-weekly with his or her counselor to demonstrate progress towards standards, which may include assessments and the log of the date. If it appears that the student is not on track to earn the credit, the counselor shall communicate with the parent to determine the best path forward. So, that's kind of the guideline. And then, this is the evaluation tool. So, this document will be used within an organization approaches a district administrative request permission to provide extended learning. The rubric that accompanies this document should be utilized to determine if credit can be granted for the anticipated learning experience once the information is filled in below and the rubric is scored. I really see this as, like, if there are certain businesses, and then, it's gonna be, like, then, once you do it, then we don't, like, we already know that that's the-
And we can ask for the end of the policy itself.
Yeah.
Like, if it's already pre-existing.
Yeah. Yep.
And so, once that's established, it should be-
And here's the, yeah, and here's the same rubric, all of that, as well. So, it's just this little narrative. It is, okay, so, once the information is filled in below and the rubric is scored, the building principal will confer with the superintendent to determine if the proposed extended learning opportunity will be approved. If it is not approved due to missing information or short calls within the rubric, the organization will be allowed to re-admit proposal to address the deficiencies. Once approved, this extending learning opportunity will be approved for all students. The superintendent shall maintain a list of all approved ELOs and will ensure that the list is posted on the parents' two community pages of the district website. And it has all the other stuff. So, are you guys good with that? Anything that you feel like needs to change? Okay, so. Okay, so, would you take to the September board meeting? Can you see?
Oh, I'm perfect.
So, um, will you take the draft and then the, the three things at the bottom, Maria?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so. Okay, are we good with this one? Do we need to look at it anymore? Okay. So, electronic devices. So, before we get into, um, I did send out a survey, and we did have quite a few people respond, so I think we can go through it and I'll pull up the policy and go through that. But I just kind of want to show you what I did regarding the procedure, because that was one of the things last week that we talked about, is that we needed to have a procedure, and we're all over the place. So, I just put in generically, like, these are some ideas, but I do feel like we need to spend some time, like, what do we want if you have a first offense? And then the other pieces, are we, is this different if you're elementary versus high school?
Did you give me feedback from parents in the survey regarding, like, what they would like to see happen if their child?
Um, I don't, I haven't gone through the feedback for that.
Okay. I was just wondering, maybe there was some parental feedback, like, on, you know.
Yeah. Let's look at just what I put together first, and then we can go through this. So, I kept the definition from the policy, so electronic devices mean, so that it's all encompassing. And then, access to and using electronic, um, electronic devices at school is a privilege, not a right. That's also in the policy, I thought that was super important. Students who violate this policy are subject to the following disciplinary action. So, I just put first offense. Confiscation of the electronic device for the remainder of the class period. I, I don't know, that's what some people put, so, I don't know if-
That's what some are doing. My question is, could you state this violated, will be subject to following disciplinary action? Like, as a minimum, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what will happen, like, well, the minimum that would happen is it would be going to the classroom, but it could be for the day. Like, if our building chose, chose that it's for the day.
Well, I think that's the problem, is we're trying to get it, so if we wanted it to be-
The issue with just the class period is that, as a teacher, I have no way of letting the office know that, because we actually talked about this in one of our meetings. There's no way for me to input into Skyword that I confiscated it during first hour, and then somebody else confiscated it during third hour, and then somebody else took it at sixth hour. So, now that's three confiscations in one day type of thing, so that-
So, would we rather, and I, I did that one, because then I, for the second offense, I said it's for the full day. So, we could say for the first offense, it's the full day, but then what are we saying for the second day?
Parents can be given.
First, first, parents can be given. That, so this would be, you'd give it to the kid at the end of the day? Okay, so, I mean, for, for remainder of the day.
And the thing about it is, before we kind of did this, I was already kind of doing that as an individual teacher. I would keep it for the full day, and they would come back at the end of the day. And quite honestly, I didn't really usually have any issues with that kid moving forward, because I knew that I would take it and it would be gone. So, um, so I don't know, if you're seeing, like, a lot of repeat offenders, or?
And I don't want to complicate anything, but sometimes kids, their phones just go off. And I'll say, turn it off, put it in your pocket. Do we need to clarify whether that means that's using it, or?
No, but I think it, you know, like-
I think that's where teacher discretion is.
Teacher discretion, I would say, put on a desk, you can have that, and then it helps you know, oh, don't let it go.
Every day, and every reminder, now you're talking about a disruption, disruption?
So, it could be just that in class period, if it's just a, an accident?
Yeah, no, and I think most teachers, most teachers are pretty-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know too many, I mean, I'm sure there might be people who know that, like, for example, first hour, I always tell my, I tell my students, I said, I, I get it, it's first hour, you forgot to silence it. So, if I ever get to silence, fine, I'll do the same thing, I'll put mine on silence, you put yours on silence, it goes without saying.
It's just after the third or fourth day that it's like, okay.
Yeah, then it's no longer, it's a hassle.
I mean, so, some of it has to be kind of a teacher discretion, I, I would think, but I-
Do you feel like I need to put something in there as for alarming?
That's why I didn't want to, I didn't want to complicate it.
And I think that's what I'm trying to get away from.
Well, here's, here's, I guess, can we go back up to the definition of, of, let's try, okay, so.
That's what we have in the policy.
Access to using this, because the students who violate this policy, okay, I guess, because we get into those semantics, um, I always preface mine with active usage. So, like, you're saying, well, it was an accident, it went off, that's not active usage, I silenced it, put it away. Nowhere in here does it actually say active usage.
And is that another thing we should think about, is it, should it be silenced, should it be completely turned off? I mean-
I think silence would be-
Just silenced, or?
But, but there's not a thing that says active-
Well, but this is the procedure, it's the policy that, so right here, I just put, so students who violate this policy by actively using-
Their device, or their device?
Their device.
Doing, yeah, but your time, you're just doing classes.
Our system could have following, yes, okay.
So, I think that kind of, because that gives you that grace of, that was an accident, I didn't know it was gonna go off type of thing, so.
Okay. So, then I have confiscation of the electronic device for the remainder of the day. Second offense is a discipline referral, parent contact, a daily check-in with the administration, and confiscation for the day, and parent retrieval, whatnot. Do we want to do, like, a third offense, and then it's gone for a week?
So, yeah.
Because then I just put repeated and severe loss of privilege to bring electronic devices to school. And then it just says consequences may exceed this, this gives us those stated in those guidelines, if the students gave it escalates to results in student code of conduct violations such as, but not limited to disobedience, disruptive or revolt when necessary, police, um, authorities may be contacted. And then I just put the disclaimer, the district shall not be responsible for the loss after destruction of personal electronic devices on school property.
You do need a period of no regard, sure.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the only, as you, your second offense where it says discipline referral, I would put that not top one, because we do log. So, that we know, otherwise you're never gonna, like, it's a discipline referral, we, it's, the end of Skyword is a cell phone violation, and you can put it in there.
So, do we want to do, um, okay, hold on. Did we say discipline referral, confiscation of electronic devices for the remainder of the day? Discipline, parent contact, daily check-in, con, do we want to do a third offense where this is confiscation for the week?
I don't know if we do daily check-in with the administration.
I know, I just added that, do you want it?
Can we say, these are all possible?
Because what is our current third offense, fourth offense? I mean, don't they then start rocking with lunch tensions, or?
Yeah, and like, our third offense, some of the, this is where it's tricky, some of it depends on how long it's been. Like, if they had a second offense, and they go two months, and then they get that third offense, they've done pretty darn good for a while, and they, you know, it wasn't your class again, it was a different class period, you know, those kind of things, so, there's a boost grace in there before seeing those kids where, hey, we talked about this, this has, we talked about this, that.
Like that, we can't, we're not gonna be able to quantify that in a policy. So, I think that's where there's gonna be some discretion.
I think what you have there with the repeat offenders, not even specifying third offense allows for that. What do we determine a repeat offender as? Somebody who went in time without looks different than somebody-
So, do you want me to do the, take this off?
I would say, yeah, because I don't, I mean, I don't know that it's-
So, these feel really similar outside of parents. So, the first offense, you're just letting the kid, the second offense, it's parent contact, okay? Then repeated loss of privilege to bring electronic devices to school. Okay, anything else you feel like we need to add?
I'm just thinking, possible repercussions of bringing these, you know, could be daily check-ins, could be loss of privi, I mean, if you want to list all the possibilities or those things that we've actually done, so parents can be aware.
I feel like that's listed in the policy.
Okay.
Because this is really the procedure for staff. The policy lists, it has a whole slew of potential things that it could be. You know what I mean?
And I've had those conversations with parents. Let's say the kid needs their phone at the end of the day, because, so they maybe are allowed to bring their phone to school, and check into the office.
But that's the policy.
Those are all the policy.
Right, but what they hear where it says loss of privilege to bring it to school, we may even, in some cases-
You may make an accommodation.
Like, you're not bringing it to class, I'm gonna leave my office at the end of the day, because mom wants to get it from my apartment.
But for generally, do you feel like this is works? Anything we need to change? Okay, so then let's go back through, um, so I'm gonna pull up the policy, and then I'm gonna pull up, um, the survey results, because we just got those. Okay, um, so, this parent would love to see banning of these during school hours, which is what we put. Approved, cell phone, any or should be banned. During lunch is only, is not reasonable as a person, oh, do I need to read this, you're here?
That's mine.
Okay. Okay.
But, but I did say, obviously, I'm very anti-cell phone, I wish that we could, but that's not the nature of the world we live in at this moment. And so, my comment was simply that we need to allow the passing periods, waiting till lunch is not reasonable, but the smartwatches too, I think.
Yeah.
This is one of the- Reality of actually enforcing kids' phones during class period.
Well, that's what we talked about, do we, do we put that back in? Because if we can't monitor it, then, yeah.
I think, or, you know, we did originally, but-
Yeah, we can go back through the policy.
Yeah, we do have.
So, this person said, why is middle school, I just checked, it is included.
It was, when, when I saw the survey, it wasn't spaced correctly, so it connected to the high school. That they needed, it needed to be tapped down.
Okay, that makes sense. Can the red line version of future policies be included? The problem with us doing that is, when we first started doing it, we did send out the red line version, and we had, because you have blue from ISBA, you have black from existing, and then you have- And people were, and I even sent a legend with it, and people were still super confused, that's why we said, it's, that gets too confusing. People, they, then they want to know, the feedback, they wanted to know, well, what's the blue again, what's the, and so it wasn't even about the policy, it was just about the legend that was attached, so. Um, so then, I support this policy draft.
This one's interesting, because-
Thank you for living high school to before-school lunch and after, phones in the halls between classes can be a huge problem.
Which is true. I mean, I know that's why they tried, I just don't know how we realistically enforce that.
Well, and not only that, but if we're trying to minimize use in the classroom, then the students need to know, just realistically, that they'll have an opportunity to check between class peers, and, and that is their free time, that is their five minutes between class peers to do what they need to do. And that might be checking in to see if mom needs them to pick up little Johnny after school, or if their coach needs them to meet them at lunch, or if-
Well, are you just gonna have more kids trying to sneak?
And that's the thing, and then that's the thing, they'll sneak in the classroom.
This person says this, I'm concerned how teachers are gonna do, monitor all the cell phones being put away during class time, seems great and reasonable, but how can teachers monitor what is happening for eight hundred? I'm also concerned about teachers needing to check watches, how will they know? My kids were running watches, they look like, but do not get text messages, although there are some looking watches that have access to the internet. Are you really expecting a teacher to know each make and model? Also, many smartwatches have activity trackers, which are important to many people. I would suggest rethinking the watch portion, and teachers that are concerned can always ask students to remove watch during test to get rid. And in my mind, it's not that they're removing their watch, I mean, we're not telling them to take it off, we're just saying they can't use it.
Well, and we disagree. And I, and I actually don't know who did this, because this person came and spoke to me as well, and I'm totally on the same page, um, with regards to the smartwatches. Some of them are just activity trackers, they just happen to look like those, and we don't want to discourage that, and it's a watch as well.
I just think they can't be, they can't, so you can't use the cellular portion of your watch.
The issue, and I don't have a smartwatch, would be just asking students to turn off their notifications, because I said to students-
They're doing this the whole time.
Because if they're doing this the whole time, I'm like, train, their brain is not huge, they're, they're focused on this thing. So, I have asked students, and I told them, I go, if it becomes an issue, it becomes an issue, I may ask you to remove it, so.
And I do think that probably is our, should be the most common practice, that with a smartwatch.
So, we probably need to put that in there.
Active use of a smartphone.
Yeah. Somebody said, yeah, um, but again, they have the version, it's not clean, because it was not, this draft is much better. Does this mean that students cannot bring their own laptop to use at school following school, or, or should their parents choose to? I appreciate my students having the option to use a personal device, I do not like the liability of them carrying around a phone with them, so please continue to allow this option. Um, I felt like the board felt like they needed to allow that option too at the Tuesday meeting, didn't you? They didn't say no at the Tuesday meeting. Do not allow electronics for any students, all they do is play games. Technology was supposed to help, but not only can see our schools.
Just to back check on that last one, the same issue's gonna arise, though, and I get what the students come from, as far as not one of the liability concern, but the issue still remains that we cannot monitor what they are doing on their own devices, and so-
One of the things, what they said, the rule, what, the, the consensus, because I talked about that, the consensus was that we put in the policy, and Bob did say that he felt like we need to make it clear, like, it's embedded in here, but that phones are not allowed. Electronic device used during class time is not allowed, like, that should be bolded, so we can add that in there. And the other piece they said is that, um, in order to use a personal device, you have to connect to the school wifi.
But you can still connect it to the school wifi, doesn't allow you to monitor passwords, and then figure out how to get around stuff, so.
Well, unless you check every single kid's personal thing, you're not gonna know.
And not for that, I mean, not for your experience, but you can still access stuff even through the school wifi, even on their phone books they can, but at least on their phone books, I can X out of their YouTube or X out of their Netflix. So, that's the thing that I think, you know, we're running into, but.
Okay, so, we are feeling like, you feel like we should put this back?
That has to be, um, motion. And we, and this is kind of a teach-two moment as well. I think what we need to really teach to the students is that not every notification is an emergency.
Why is it, they're not working for me right now? Well, now you've got an old switch on this time. And then, some call.
And then to the parents, we need to kind of do a teach-two as well, that we were talking about, that we understand that sometimes a thought comes in your head, and you send it to your kid, but then, please explain to your child that it's not necessarily an emergency, it's just something that you need them to know, and they can respond when it's appropriate type of thing.
Okay, so, I feel like we'll leave that highlighted, and that could be more discussion, just let's go through, and I want to add some of the discussion. So, are we saying after-school, the student's last class in the afternoon?
This is before and after school.
Why isn't it just before and after school?
Yeah.
That's what I think, maybe, what do you think?
Well, it could be after the student's last class in the afternoon.
Or that could be fifth hour, or could be there.
Yeah, because some work and stuff, I don't know, but.
But wouldn't it just be after school? Because that's relative to the kid, right? Yeah. That's confusing, I think.
Well, if they are not in a classroom, then, yeah. Well, then technically, there's kids that are on, at, for a day, and they may be at the Go-Mon Center.
Yeah, I never, probably not, but.
So, are we gonna say, um, access to and the use of is a privilege and not a right? Maybe in possession, let's just go with this, the students may be in possession of and use district-issued electronic. I feel like the board said, it's not about being, can you, and use, I don't think we can say this, right? Wouldn't you say that? I felt like they were, they felt like personal use was fine, yes?
I asked this about this yesterday, when we were leaving, our building had, she told me that it felt like it was, they were okay with being pretty restricted, but I don't know, but I don't think that any-
Do they understand, though, that you cannot monitor those? Oh, yeah, I said that. But did you feel like they said we couldn't? I felt like they were like, you know.
Use personal.
Yeah, I, my- I feel like we got both. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm just gonna leave it the way it is, and-
Well, the other thing is, when it goes to the board, or actual approval, and they don't, if they're good with any except for that, then you change that or you-
Yeah, we'll all ask the question. Um, okay, so, access to and use of electronic devices is a privilege, students may be in possession of, and we can, um, I'm gonna just leave this part in, and we can change it. Um, shall not be used in a manner that disrupts the educational process, including but not limited to, posing a threat academic or character, violating the integrity of another individual, um.
So, now the focus on this has been really toward cell phones, like, when this is not electronic devices. The one question that has come to me, as we talk about this, would be headphones and earbuds. Like, are we really saying no during class time for those pieces? Because we do have people that allow them for audiobooks, or?
But I think that that's at teacher's discretion, this is for, that this is just on their own will, if it's teacher-initiated, then I think it's fine.
We use wired again, you cannot have any-
And that's what I've heard this, this one, since it's come to me.
Yeah, because I put on my, I put on my things for my class, I said optional or required, wired headphones, not Bluetooth.
And you guys feel like that's appropriate for me to put back? Because I felt like Bob said, it need to be really explicit, electronic devices may not be used during class time.
Well, okay, but then-
But defining electronic devices as earbuds and headphones, I just, we just need to make sure that that's clear.
But you also have laptops and tablets, and we use our phone books all the time, that's an electronic.
But this is specific to, um, student use, electronic, not-
Well, maybe the electronic devices may not-
Be used for non-academic purposes. How do you want to word that?
May not be used for non-academic purposes during class time. May not be for that.
I just, we have them for forty-six minutes a day, they can go forty-six minutes and use a novel paperback and read, they don't have that in their hand, they don't have. And I know some teachers are gonna allow that, I just think.
I just know that you were addressing the fact that we're saying no phone books.
Yeah.
No, and that's not the intent of this, the intent of this is about their own personal, so I could say personal electronic devices.
Okay. Personal electronic devices may not be used during class time. Because then if they want to use headphones, they get school-ish wired ones, and it's not that we're complicated.
Um, well, but then-
Whatever, it's their computer.
It's their computer, I mean, that's the problem, um.
Back to the non-academic.
But you would still use, you know. Do you want me to put that, I'm gonna put it back in. I'm gonna leave it right there and put it back in.
Oh.
Personal electronic devices may not be used for non-academic purposes during class time.
Yes, sure.
Okay. Well, here we go, and then we can have the board publicly say, I felt like they, you know, we, we had the whole conversation about, you know, can they access it, cannot? And so, their, the takeaway, wouldn't you say, was, um, well, we just have to say that they have, they have to access the internet from the school, they can't do it on their own.
I'm working on refreshing my memory.
Okay. Because that was my take, that was my takeaway of the conversation.
Let's assume that in a classroom, only two or three students have a personal device at most, does that mean that every class period that they commit, you have to check to see, are they logged in? Are they, because if they go to their guest wifi, they may just-
I felt like, um, Bob was just wanting it to be really clear that you can't, that we're not misusing it, but I didn't feel like there was a for sure, we're not, we're saying no personal devices, I never heard that.
If they log on to our wifi, like, my son uses-
All the filters apply.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because my son uses his own personal phone book, and he's still able to monitor, because he logs in with his student ID and all that stuff.
Right, but if you use your own personal hotspot, right.
And that's, I mean, do we have to physically check that they are connecting, but, I don't know. Right, and that's, I mean, do we have to physically check that they are connected, but I don't know. That's where classwise is nice, because if you don't see the students.
Screen, then we know they're logged in.
Screen, you know they're not connected, so is there a way to make sure that even personal devices are showing up?
You know, I feel like there might be, because I did have a student last year, two different students, one, she had a MacBook, so not know, like she wasn't, she wasn't able to do Google Forums or anything like that. And I had another student who had his own device, and I'm fairly certain his stuff did pop up on my screen when he would be in my classroom doing stuff, so I don't know if it's because it was a a Google computer, or if it was like a Chromebook setup versus a MacBook, so that could be too.
Yeah, my technology question, that we find out with personal devices, can they still be connected to classwise, as long as they're logged into their student account on that?
Yeah, I'll find out.
Cause in that's the case, that would eliminate that concern.
Yeah, so that was one of the things, is, um, we have to put that somewhere, is that, um, if your use, the use of a personal device must be, um, accessed internet through, uh, school.
And maybe it's, they have to be able to be actively part of the Google classroom.
Well, that's the thing, cause, cause classwise hooks to Google.
It's a personal classroom, so.
Okay, so.
Well, if Google classroom doesn't connect, because so many teachers use that platform to give information out, or to put a video out, or whatever.
I hate putting Google classroom though, because then you're locked into it, like so somehow we have to have a generic enough that it's, you have to be accessing through the school wifi.
Schools platforms, like your, there needs to be compatible with school platforms and software.
Yeah, exactly. So let's get through this and then we'll add that piece, so, use of non-issue electronic devices shall be limited to, so we changed that, middle school, high school, elementary, we took out this. Each student will be required to follow thirty-two seventy district approved access to electronic services and networks, students may only access the internet through the filtered district connection. But this is where we could put that, students may only access the internet through the filtered district connection.
And all devices must be compatible with. Districts, network platforms, and that.
Yeah?
Yeah. That way, we go away from Google, you can deal with every platform, so the.
Yep, students may only access the internet through the filtered district connection, all devices must be compatible with district network platforms and software, okay?
So you are turning off devices.
Oh yeah, good job. Nope, good job, I don't remember types, so.
I know.
Okay, uh, district staff will not provide software or assistance for student-owned devices. Yeah.
Like a terminal?
Okay, use of cameras and any type of electronic device strictly prohibited in locker rooms, restrooms, classrooms. Students found to be using any electronic device, so this is where I feel like it kind of talks about all the generics, so students found to be using any electronic device to send or receive personal messages, data, or information that would contribute to or constitute cheating, shall be subject to discipline, and the electronic device shall be confiscated and not returned to a parent or a system. No, students are responsible for safeguarding electronic devices they bring to school, students shall comply with any additional rules developed by the school concerning the appropriate use of telecommunications or other electronic devices. Students who violate this policy are subject to disciplinary action up to and including losing the privilege of bringing the device on the school property, detention, suspension, expulsion, the administrator will confiscate the devices and parent will be contacted. The confiscated device will be returned at the end of the school day, the device will be returned according to procedure. So I think we should take this while, at the end of the school day, cause I, although in the both defenses, we said that, so we could leave it, but I would say the confiscated device will be, um, or it says confiscate the device, the device will be returned according to procedures that accompany this policy, I feel like we could strike through this whole thing.
Yeah.
Don't you?
And semantics wise, what is it contacted?
Hold on.
What says parent who contacted, will we change that to notify, or is that a semantics? I'm just thinking, cause in some cases there, like every single time a kid, we put it in Skyward, they see it, I have competition with it all, first you then. There may not, oh, every single time, but they are gonna be.
Right, so let's say that students who violate this policy are subject to disciplinary action up to and including losing the privilege of bringing the device on the school property, detention, suspension, or expulsion, the administrator will confiscate the devices and parent guardians will be notified, the device will be returned according to the procedures that accompany this policy, when necessarily police authorities may be contacted. And then we have any student has, who has accommodations identified within an individualized education plan or section five oh four shall meet with their individual team to educational team to determine appropriate access to an electronic device within their accommodation. The use of monitoring devices accommodated within an individualized education health plan or section five oh four are excluded, the district shall not be responsible for loss.
We need to include health plan, that. This paragraph here.
Well, we talked about that last time, that said that there would never be a health plan that's standalone without a five oh four, so, um.
I didn't know fair to what, I just wonder, like, putting it there's an ever, and then we're covered in case there's ever, I don't know.
So what else are we missing on this?
So that was pretty much the general consensus, well, making it extremely clear that cellphones may not be used during class time.
That's what I thought, I felt like we went back and forth about personal devices, but I don't feel like there was an ever directive where anybody, cause then they said it would be a hardship for some family.
To make it, also explicit that, um, the, um, exceptions on the five oh four.
Yeah, we have that, and I feel like making this part, um, explicit in bold, personal electronic devices may not be used for non-academic purposes during class time. And then with our, what we said is, all devices must be compatible with district network platforms and software, students may only access the internet through the filtered district connection.
I feel like putting it for non-academic purposes might be a little bit, cause you know kids are gonna, they'll be in class and they'll be on their phone and the teacher will.
Well, it's supposed to be put away.
Get on them, and then, oh, well, I was looking up, I feel like they would have every excuse under the sun.
So you just say, it may not be used.
Having this in the policy, I think is good, because it does cover the teacher and the student when they're using their personal devices. Are there going to be times, and I know that this does happen?
Yeah.
That like last five or ten minutes of class, the kid's playing snake, because they're done with their work and they have nothing else to work on, that happens, and that non-academic, yes, is the teacher necessarily going to kick them out of class or take their device? No, um, so, but I think this does cover us, and that way they're not on YouTube, or they're not watching Netflix, or they're not, you know, doing those types of things, and if I catch that kid doing it on their personal device, I can say, look, here's a deal, it's a privilege to have your own device, but if you can't follow the policies and procedures, then you're going to be getting a Chromebook, and.
Do we have a policy that says you can not watch Netflix, but you can play game, I mean, is there any policy that has anything to do with game? Cause I don't even allow any, hardly anything.
I really have to look through that acceptable use policy that they.
So that's very subjective to teachers then.
Well.
Oh yeah, they have a, they have a.
Yeah. But there is one on.
Well, but Netflix, there is a policy around videos, so Netflix is in our commercial video policy, but as far as unacceptable use, we can pull that up, but you're right.
Well, and trying to block any, any, everything is, is pretty ridiculous, but.
Three minutes, right?
You can't even do it on their Chromebooks, it's just a pill, so.
So the new, right, when you put there one, and it says personal electronic devices, and then what's this, use of non-issue electronic devices?
It should be the same, is what you're saying.
Mm-hmm, or do we just say use of cellular devices, like this is specific to the application of solar effects? Like absolutely not, there's no negotiation there, or this other one gives a little room for whether they're laptop.
What you said, non-issue electronic devices shall be limited to. Non-district issue electronic devices.
But that would then include, so I think we're sending a message.
So what, what am I saying here? Tell me what it should say. You're saying personal cellular devices?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You don't think.
No, no, Pierre, this, I think is relative to, to our cellphones, this is our cellphone application. But that other one is more general.
But you're, but I don't see, and I don't see this as, I mean, I'm like, if you have your personal iPad, you're not bringing that out, if you have your Kindle, and you wanna, I, in my mind, it's not just cellphones, it's anything that is yours, that you're bringing out during class times, that could, that's not appropriate.
So they can't use any of those ever during class?
I, unless it, the, it teacher says it's okay. That's why we put non-academic purposes. That's the hard part, is we can't capture every single what if.
But then when, oh, we want to allow them to use personal laptops. So then should it be explicit in here that it's like, like the teacher's discretion?
We could, personal electronic devices may not be used for non-academic purposes.
If you put teacher discretion. But then the policy just clears, it just clears everything else.
Right, right.
Because then I'm fighting with the teacher next door that lets their kids listen to music on their earbuds, using their cellular devices, and then it just, this just becomes an old boy.
So that's why, that's why I'm like, so, well, I like that it's super clear, but I just don't know where a personal laptop fits into that, if we're saying no use of personal devices, non-district issue, my laptop's not district issue.
So you're saying this is clear enough to say explicitly, you, you think that that thing here should be, something in here should dictate that it's a phone, not necessarily a laptop? Is that where delineating between?
Or. Or that we are going to allow approved laptops for, I don't know.
Okay, do you see why what you're saying?
Yeah.
So.
Personally, may not be used. Allowing is a laptop, as then, but this makes it sound like nothing personal, which would include a laptop.
This actually, everything, this is good, this actually makes it sound like we're including everything up here, and we're not necessarily including everything up here, we're just including cellphones down here.
It makes it sound like everything up there is included.
So, so what we're trying to say is that down here, this is really just specific to the cellphone situation, not necessarily the, the computer or the earphones or the whatnot.
This is specific to everything outside of.
Everything, so we, that's what we need to say.
Use of non-district issue shall be limited to, um.
Or should it say use of personal electronic devices shall be limited to?
We just, these should probably be the same. So, do we like personal electronic or non-district issue? I, we have to put an exception to the rule, that's what you're asking, so somewhere we have to put that.
If the board is saying we need to be able to allow personal laptops.
I don't feel like they gave a directive that you can't.
Then, I just feel like, would, not, if, right now, we're saying no to anyone including a personal laptop.
Down here, yes.
Well, even above, based on definition of electronic devices, they've included laptops.
And the idea.
They included laptops here, and then we kind of got rid of that down here by saying, may not be used for non-academic purposes. So in here, what I'm saying, they can be used.
But then you give me the same argument for headphones or.
Okay, well, yeah, cause I use headphones for laptop purposes, but.
Do I say laptops or computer?
Where are we?
What are we calling them? We call them laptops.
Okay, so that's.
Or just devices for class, in lieu of your district issue Chromebook?
And we've been super clear, we've been super clear with our staff, we don't want kids to be able to take their phone out, even if it's using time, or we'll get you stopwatches. Like, you're not gonna take your phone out to take pictures, like, and otherwise, it's a, now, well, this has this class, we do all these activities, and we are bundled all the time. Like, no phones ever, zero, like.
No, I, I.
That's how it was when I was in school.
When I do my projects, I tell my students, especially if they're using phones off, or pictures off their phones, I say, you need to do that alone, you need to share them to the board.
Okay, what about this? Personal electronic devices may not be used for non-academic purposes during class time, except for laptops used in place of district issue Chromebooks.
Yeah.
And then, use.
And I think that's the case, but I would just, I would actually say personal devices may not be used during class time. Or take out that non-academic purposes piece of it, because then you're gonna eliminate that, oh, well, it's for.
So personal activities may, personal activities, personal electronic devices may not be used during class time, except for laptops used in place of district issue Chromebooks. And then use of non, um, district issue electronic devices shall be limited to, and then go?
Yeah.
Do I like that?
Um, I wish you wanted to search the non-district, to just personal electronic devices.
Yeah, so.
Which one do you like better, personal electronic devices and non-district issue? You like?
I think personal is pretty self-explanatory.
And so then, you can change something like that?
I haven't been able to grab that too.
Oh, okay.
Never been to all places. No? That's fine.
Oh. We'll go back over here. Okay, so let's go back, so. Students may be in possession of and use personal electronic devices on school, on school property, the elec- electronic devices shall not be used in a manner that disrupts the educational process, including but not limited to posing a threat, violating confidentiality or privacy. Personal electronic devices may not be used during class time, except for laptops used in place of district issue Chromebooks. Use of personal electronic devices shall be limited to.
I'm sorry, did a, did a, just, if you're not using a district issue Chromebook and you're using your own, does the office have to know, like, do you have to have that on record somewhere?
I'm signing, so, the same waiver as a Chromebook, don't they?
And I think when they're gonna do the Chromebook checkout. I didn't sign anything last year, my kid who took his personal Chromebook to school every day.
Yeah.
And they just didn't issue him a regular, the office just knows they don't have their own Chromebook, and they do need one sometimes.
Well, I, I was like, middle. Well, he didn't ever, but middle school, they just keep him in a Chrome card anyway, so he just never checked, checked it.
Well, I mean, like to take certain tasks or ISATs, he doesn't, he can't use his own money.
He did, I, I never heard him do that.
Oh.
Cause any of you should have one for that.
They buy that.
Because like, it's actually.
Okay, that would be, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but, but he had one assigned to him, cause like, it'll all pay for it, it'll be house.
Okay, so there was already still one assigned.
Yeah, because I did the whole thing at the beginning of the school, but he else did, I didn't, he just took his own, because he did.
Cause I think for some teachers, they don't know, like, they, they just brought their parents' laptop that day, and they're just, you, you know, I didn't know if there was something, we've had some type of form or notification. This is middle school, or they bring all sorts of stuff to school.
So should there be, should there's like a waiver or like a agreement form for Chromebooks, shouldn't there be something included?
That says I'm not using a school one, I'm bringing my own.
I think it should just be added to the Chromebook page, then you're signing a waiver, and, and understanding that whether you're using a personal one or a Chromebook, you. That would to me would be on a, um.
But they, they still will have to use a proper school one at times, so, I don't know, I just.
Okay, we talked about English, Chad, that if, in this case, we can't get classwise to always be, like, they're giving a test and you wanna make sure, you could, you could require kids to use a school issue Chromebook for testing.
We do, we just send it out to the offices, they grab it, they have actual ones in there, and they grab them.
So, the, the waiver language will be added to the current, um, insurance form, right? That's what you're talking about, or are you talking about the actual this form that I'm gonna use? Cause that's in the, um, when they register, which form are we talking about?
I think when they register, either to check out Chromebooks, that you, you know, every kid will have to either check out Chromebook or check a box.
But the checkout is, is essentially an insurance form, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but it tells the school that they have one.
That's where we're gonna add the waiver information.
So that said, we do not have anything like that to track who is using personal devices, that can give us a report on who has a Chromebook checked out.
Right, and then it's a process of elimination.
Cause I, as a teacher, I would like the information, cause kids will switch out Chromebooks, and, and somebody will bring somebody else's laptop to class, and they can be pretty sneaky with it, and we were just really nice as a teacher to say, I already know that Susan has her own.
Yeah.
These are the.
And these are the brands.
In the, in.
Or have their own devices.
What I think we're saying is, on that insurance page, when they're getting, everybody has to go to that, and then we'll have a waiver, they're either signing off waiver for personal use.
Or you're leaving insurance, or you're buying insurance, you have three options.
Yeah.
Buy insurance, you choose not to get insurance, or you bring your own.
Right, personal device, and then, um, and if they do that, then it's in Skyward, and then you can generate a list of who has personal devices. Correct. Generate in Skyward, okay, I will talk to.
One thing I generally learn from these policies is, even though something seems.
It's not.
It's not, you, you, something else kind of comes up, so.
It's, it's with the logistics of implementation. Okay, do we feel good about this? Do you feel like we represented what they asked from Tuesday?
Yeah, that's generally, um, the only other thing, um, that really was conversated of the office, just the, like how many starts and how, like the discipline process, like.
And so that's the procedure piece that I built, so this is, I feel like then we have this, so.
So did you change that word, when you said, we were gonna change it to say based on procedure?
Yeah, she did, it said, yeah, she, it said that based on the, the procedure.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that even ties in with what they were asking after.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause she didn't have something. Yeah, cause she didn't hide some things and then just said based on.
And what was you're talking about, I. We're talking about it. It was a company, yeah, company, yeah. Device, well, the procedures at a company is called, yeah, so then I put the, here's the first offense, second offense, and then they can add a thing.
Well, and I really do appreciate the, the specific, especially the specificity of this, but also the open ended of it, because the court, you know, like, what Chad was saying, you know, if you have a kid that comes in to your office three times in one week, that's an issue, if you have a kid that shows up once.
First week and then not four weeks later another week, and then four weeks later another one, that's not a superior, that's just somebody who forgets.
Would we do this waiver, do you feel like that would be good?
I, I, I feel not qualified to be saying too much, cause I don't, I don't understand all the processes. I'm just speaking as a teacher.
But you're right, and in answer to what you're saying, I just, when Tom said, at the end of next week, once we had kids in the building, they could give us a list of all the kids who have a, that they don't currently actually have.
You would just have to do the process of elimination, but on that waiver, if it's a, this is who took it, this is who signed the waiver for, and, and with use of personal device. The other thing we said that we wanted on there is that it's really clear on there that they always have to access, um, district wifi.
I just have an issue with kids, like, bringing the other kids' Chromebooks, and they're all, they all love their name on it, so I can say, this isn't even your Chromebook, you're not supposed to be carrying this around, but then if Suzie gets her Apple laptop to her friend, and her friend comes in with it, well, Suzie said I could use it today, like, this is not yours, go get your district issue Chromebook.
Right.
And that's part of that A P that they sign.
Yeah, so I just wanna be able to say, I'm not gonna have a parent come back at me and say, well, she got permission, so she should be able to use that, I'm like, is that okay?
No.
There's so many vague things that, I'm sending classroom, kids get smarter than me every year, and they argue with me, I'm like, oh, maybe that is a thing.
They're sad, yeah.
And the funny thing, like, my level, like, you have a Chromebook, I don't know what to use theirs, you know, so I'm actually all bored with saying, oh, you're not using it in that class? And he needs one, and they're cool, you know, so.
Cause that, that would be good to know too, because I tell them, you are not allowed to touch anybody else's Chromebook in here, you cannot.
Technically, they shouldn't, because if you.
If they damage it, then it runs on the home.
Right, yeah.
So, no, for sure, thankfully, uh.
So I just didn't know if there's already a policy in place, and maybe I'm just way behind her here.
That's in, oh, that's in the, when they sign up, yeah. Okay, so are you feeling like we can put this to bed and take it to, so, yeah, you're good, does this help you, me putting those, it helps me? Or is it over the top?
Not sure, it's not over the top, it definitely helps.
Okay, volunteer assistant, so this is the one that we talked about, um, last week. Okay.
Teacher, so we're leaving you?
Yeah, are you staying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think I'm more of a problem at health, though.
It's not, no worries.
Love you, love you. Um, uh, board chair Thompson did ask for, uh, how much we paid, so I had that in there for, uh, for Raptor. And, um, this year, we had to, they redid the deal, and so we had to pay for that year, and then we had to pay for them to do the upload and to change it, so Raptor is a program that they all, oh, do you know what it is?
You already talked about it.
Okay, and so I did include that in there, so, um.
It's expensive.
It, it is expensive, um.
But also, I think worth it.
I think it's worth it, yeah, so she did want me to pull some different examples, so here's Home Dells, here's Garden Valley, here's Boundary. Um, do we wanna go through this, or do we want to stop it here and? Can you go, what are you thinking?
Is this something you can centrally locate, or is it, does it have to be via each site that you're?
That's what we're talking about, so right now, the way the policy reads, so this was our draft.
And it's pretty short.
So, the draft is, um, we don't, to my knowledge, we didn't make a ton of changes.
No, I think cause we were reading, we were having that discussion about.
So it just says volunteers are people who assist, a volunteer shall be an individual who has not entered into an express or implied compensation agreement with the district, is excluded from the definition of employee, is not employed by the district in the same or similar capacity. Um, volunteers with unsupervised access shall are subject to the district's policy mandating background checks. So this is the issue, because, um, we have to, like, so right now, currently what we do is if you wanna come into school and you're not even be around kids who have to be ran through Raptor, if you want to, you're like taking, you're going to Silverwood, and you're gonna be alone with kids, then we're saying background checks, so we went back and forth on are we saying background checks, are we saying Raptor, are we saying just a background check for everybody, that was where our discussion was.
Yeah, I, I remember being, yeah, talking about that, cause then, can you look that up, just see if they've already been through a background check, and you said they have to do it each time, they go to a different. Like, so she was crazy to do that.
Yeah, so, um, what do we put for this one?
I don't feel like.
We haven't touched on that one. Yeah.
Cause it's somebody that's gonna actually need a background check, it's gonna somehow skirt that background check. And then a waiver being the kids.
Um, so, we're really right here, the superintendent shall be responsible for developing and implementing procedures for utilizing volunteers, procedures for effective communication, the final, except for reject, principal and intervolunteer, and so it's really this right here, this is what we have to talk about, what do we want it to be? So volunteers.
And then would it be volunteers that aren't affiliated with, you know what I mean, like.
We have it, it's anybody.
Some random person, or like, do we exclude parents that we already know who kids are in the district?
It doesn't matter, if you're a parent, you wanna go volunteer in classroom, you still have to go through Raptor, even if it's your volunteer in your own kid's class, because you don't, you don't have to be with kids.
So do we differentiate between that, or do we keep it one or the other?
Well, um, typically what we've said is if you are gonna be unsupervised, you have to do a bla- a background check, cause Raptor is just checking for, um, if you're on the sex offender registry list, so that's what we've said, supervised, um, volunteers are ran through Raptor, unsupervised. But the kicker is, is I, I, I kinda feel like we have to hold off and maybe just pause this one, because it's a money factor.
I think, because there's so much.
And is there someplace, is there somebody you can put it back on the parents and just let them know? If you ever feel like you wanna volunteer in your child's classroom, just be aware that you can actually go through this process, you can show up.
Right, yeah, the issue is, is middle school and high schools don't have it, and so if we put this in place and it goes to the board, then anybody that wants to go to a middle school or high school has to go through Raptor, which then, so our conversation was, well, how much is Raptor, we need to pay for it, but I feel like if I write it in the policy, then I am.
Bound to pay for it?
We're bound to pay for it, yeah, and, cause then the other piece is, is if you're unsupervised, if you're, cause there are field trips where you're by yourself, you're taking several kids and the teacher is somewhere else, technically you're unsupervised, they would have to go through a background check, and so then you have to put, are we paying for that, are?
Just make the policies start effective January first, these are all the things that you have to do to be able to do these things with kids, and here's how you do it, here's where you go, and then the Raptor thing, is that's one school has it?
Cause then we have the whole, here's the whole, here's the other examples. Um, they actually have an application, and then here's visitors in schools, and we have sex offenders, I feel like this is a big one.
Yeah.
I feel like Lisa should probably be here and like, up for it, do we wanna table it?
Yeah, I.
Come back, no.
Does the Raptor, is, does it have, Raptor have to be in every building, or is it just one in the district, right?
That's one, no, there's one at all six elevens.
Oh.
Yeah, but if you were gonna, let's just say you were doing your Silverwood field trip, and, um, you know, you had, let's just say Lakeland had twenty volunteers, they have to go jump around, and you would inundate that office.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you have one here, and they had a timeframe.
Exactly. Right, and I've actually talked about that, but it's, we're still, I'm still allocating money if I put it, so, I feel like we should wait and table this and bring it back since we finished the others. Are you good with that?
Yeah, there's just a lot of that, you know, and it's multiple coinciding with each other.
And it's important.
It's a big one, yeah, okay, so are we good to end it now? Okay. Perfect, okay, guys, so, we have this, there's a couple of others, so, um, uh, you have so we have that one, so thirty-four forty is going to the board meeting. Um, thirty-two sixty-five is going. And, um, twenty-four sixty is going to the board, to the September board meeting, were there any others? And then all those accompanying docs that are attached to it.
Yeah.
Twenty-four thirty-five is going. That's four. I think that's it, yeah.
I think so. I'll go back through my notes also.
I feel like that's it, cause this was August, so it's just those, okay, okay, are we good to end it?
Yep.